I'd like to call to order the board meeting for the Village of Shorewood on August the 11th in the year 2020. If you would join me in the pledge of allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Diane Roelkall, please.
Mayor Chapman.
Here.
Dan Anderson.
Here.
Steve Brockman.
Here.
C.C. Debold.
Here.
Barb Kirkland.
Here.
Steve Brockman.
I'm here again.
Tony Luciano.
Here.
And Dan Warren.
Okay, Dan is, uh, they, because of all outages, they, they worked around the clock last night, so he's still at work. On his way home, so. Uh, but the record shows a quorum, the regular village business can't be accomplished tonight. Okay, like to move on to section B of our meeting. Are there any citizens that wish to address the board? Yes, sir. Pardon me?
I said I assume I should use the podium.
Yeah, we love you too because you're gonna be on TV.
Okay, good. Hey, um, we're from Deer Run. We were here a number of months ago. We've been working with John Kamarowski about trying to get the noise issue from Shoot Point Blank addressed. We actually wanted to come back today because the pace at which things have been moving has kind of ground to close to a standstill. I talked to John today by email. He said that Shoot Point Blank is still kind of going through evaluations about what their next steps are. But it's coming close to a year and a half now that this noise has been going on. So I just wanted to see if there's anything we can do to kind of push it forward. Shoot Point Blank is making money. We're living with the noise generated by the money. And it's somehow just, I have suggestions how we can fix it. But it involves having them limit the weapons that they're shooting while they're looking for a fix. So is there something we can do to fix this or push it forward faster?
I know the staff's been working on this closely with Shoot Point Blank. Mr. Colada, the administrator, would you like to give them where we're at on this issue right now?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. So yes, we've had constant contact with them, asking them to consider next steps, you know, to address the sound. As you know, they have taken some steps. They've, they've spent considerable amount of money to do some additional insulation. And there's also some consideration for other things, other improvements to the building that would perhaps address the sound as well. My understanding is they've also perhaps moved some of the, within the building.
Right.
Changed some of the uses in, in the, some of the exterior.
Yeah, front of the range for the bigger weapons, right?
Right, so I, I think, you know, the good news is, is that they, they have an interest in continuing to try to address the concerns.
Right.
And I, I think, to be honest, the, the situation with, with COVID-19 has slowed some of that consideration. But I do believe that they are still interested in trying to address the concerns.
Okay, and that, excuse me, John's been very clear and very good about helping to, helping us to explain or helping us understand what Shoot Point Blank's doing, how they're moving, you know, at whatever pace you want to say that they're moving at. My concern is they are a lot more relaxed about finding a solution than they were about getting the range opened up for business. And we, I mean, after a year and a half, I think we've been very, very patient at trying to work with them to get this thing solved. But it can't be open-ended. They can't take forever to find a solution. So other than asking for their cooperation, what can we do? I mean, from the Village of Shorewood, I'm saying.
Well, at this point, I, I think we are, we are doing that, which is trying to work towards a solution, okay?
Slowly.
Well, I, I think sometimes.
And to be honest with you, I'm sorry to jump in, but they, they are the ones currently setting the pace, not, not the village, correct?
The village has not set up any type of deadline for certain activity, but we have been pushing on a regular basis.
And does the village have any ability to enforce a quicker pace of fix?
I don't know if that is something that, what the options are for that. I think we're trying to take this cooperative approach, looking for compliance.
Okay.
Whether there's other things we want to consider down the road, I wouldn't want to elaborate right now. But I think we are at a point where we're trying to, and they, I believe, are trying to work towards a goal of a reduced presence, you know, from a sound standpoint.
Well, again, I, I get all that, and I understand that the village is taking a very, very somewhat of a passive approach to trying to get them to solve the problem that they themselves have created. But as a, as residents, we're just not gonna live with it forever. And at some point in time, we're gonna try to take advantage of the options that we have to push them forward. I don't think any of us want that. I don't think we know exactly what those options are yet, but there's a lot of them out there to make them uncomfortable enough to move faster. So we're here tonight to find out, while it's still being cooperative, how do we do that?
Well, I, I think staff is, is trying to do that, you know, we're, we're talking to them about other things that perhaps could address it. I don't think I have anything, you know, definitive that I can share at this point. But I do understand your concern, appreciate your, your patience, and I can tell you that, you know, we are still talking about it on a regular basis with them.
We need to talk about it faster though, right? I mean, that, that's the reality. I get what you're saying. You're being cooperative. You're putting the ball in their court. They're moving at whatever pace they deem they're able to move. And every day we hear gunfire, and that gunfire is generating money for them. So there's got to be a little bit of a increased sense of urgency. And if it goes to the point where we have to do something, I don't think anybody wants that. We don't want it. You guys don't want it. It's gonna get messy for everybody. So if, if we can push, if you can push them, if the village can push them, it doesn't have to get nasty at this stage. But it's gotta get faster.
Well, I, I understand.
I mean, if you lived in our neighborhood, you wouldn't like it either.
If you do, if you do have other suggestions like the one that you mentioned earlier, you know, I think staff, you know, will, will definitely want to listen to those.
Okay, so how do I get those to the right people?
Well, you can talk with John or myself to, to start.
Okay.
We'll be happy to, to talk about any other ideas that you might have. Perhaps there's one that, that no one has considered yet.
But all those options at this point in time, as far as the village is concerned, is essentially voluntary, cooperative. You, you don't really have a stick to yield some kind of a quick change, do you?
You know, I, I, like I said before, I don't, I don't think I want to elaborate on, on that at this point. I, I think we're taking an approach that we would take in, and have taken in other situations, which is, we're trying to look for a cooperative, you know, compliance. And at this point, you know, they have been doing that, you know, they have been working along that. I understand it may not be the pace in which you'd like to see. But I do believe they are trying to take improving steps, you know, in a relatively diligent manner.
So I'm not gonna, you know, I, I understand what your perspective is. I think you understand what our perspective is. But I will say this, that it's, and this is an editorial comment. This is just my, me kind of speaking out loud about my impressions on what they've tried to do since the day this started. Their approach has never made sense. Their approach to fixing this has never made sense. It's almost like they threw stuff against the wall to see what stuck. And now, after approaching a year and a half of this noise, now they might get a sound engineer involved. And so whatever their approach is, that's their business. But it doesn't, it's just not something we're gonna live with forever. So again, while it's still being cooperative, I'm really asking you guys to do what you can. If you want to sit down and go over some suggestions, we're happy to do that. But, you know, John's walking a tight rope with them. He doesn't want to push them too far because it sounds to us like he doesn't really have any enforcement tool to prod them along. And that's frustrating for us because they made claims, they made assertions when you rezoned that property, that the noise was not gonna be an issue. It's in writing, it's on tape. And that absolutely has not been true. It's a problem every day. So we didn't contest the presence of the range because of the promises that they made. And none of those promises regarding the noise has been true. So yeah, I think you can get a sense for our frustration.
I do.
Fair enough. Any comments by anybody but, about the situation?
You know, there's nothing that's gonna be said here that's gonna satisfy you, okay?
Well.
You know, because we, we're in a situation that you've got this, you got this virus going around.
Right.
You got, you got the engineer who I just heard doesn't like to fly under these conditions.
Well, we were told that.
That I got.
The message was regarding the, the guy who's supposed to run Shoot Point Blank, one of the big bosses, as John described him.
Yeah.
Was supposed to come out here to evaluate the noise. But this gets back, and we should be very upfront about this. This gets back to the approach that's being taken by Shoot Point Blank. The noise is random. If they really wanted to find out what the noise is at its peak level, when I can hear it through my walls with the doors and the windows shut and the air conditioning on, the guy can't come out here, even John, with a decibel meter. He can't go out there on a random basis. What if he goes out there when they're shooting 22 caliber weapons? You can't hear anything. So if, if we're gonna approach, if we're gonna take a genuine approach to fix this, it's got to be done in a manner where A, the noise is fairly evaluated in a controlled way, and none of that's being done. So I don't know how they fix a problem, or you guys even are aware of a problem, that nobody really is taking the time to evaluate in a way that's realistic. I mean, if this guy flies out from Ohio or wherever he's gonna come in from, and he happens to come out on a Saturday, what if they're shooting, you know, small caliber weapons? He's not gonna hear anything. So those are the things that I think, if, if, if we want to take an honest approach, if you guys want to take an honest approach to fixing this, if Shoot Point Blank wants to take an honest approach, then, then approach this in a way that you can really find a solution, not just put wraps on the vent that didn't do anything to suppress the noise.
See, that's my problem, okay? I was under the impression that it did.
It didn't.
Okay.
It, it, and I'm gonna be very fair here.
Through the last few, you know.
They put two wraps on there of different gauges. And to be very fair, it took off the high-frequency edge of the noise. But as John and I, as we all have talked about many times, that thumping sound that comes through the walls of the house wasn't touched by the, the wraps that they put on there. Absolutely.
Yeah, sure.
Sir, could you tell me your name, please?
Sure, Dave McLaughlin.
You're welcome.
Hi, my name is Jerry Emmert.
And how do you spell your last name, sir?
E-M-M-E-R-T.
Okay.
My mask keeps dropping, I apologize. Couple of things I'd like to point out. For Deer Run, I've probably been there probably longer than most of people here. We've been there about 25 years. So on a plus side, I like the fact what Shoot Point Blank did, which was clean up that whole area over there, put up a nice building. They do maintain it, okay? I live practically behind it from where the sound is, okay? And I've heard 55 for a long time, you know, we were supposed to get a privacy fence, but we couldn't do that because the businesses along the frontage roads, so we couldn't restrict the view from the highway for those buildings.
Yeah.
Okay, so we, we got, we understood that. Shoot Point Blank, Shoot Point Blank came in, and by the way, I'm also a member of Shoot Point, okay? So I go there, I enjoy it. Uh, when you're in the building, it's not as loud as it is when you're outside the building, okay? So when they were putting it up, we were promised that the sound levels would be low. You know, we understood you probably hear a little bit of something in the background. Unfortunately, it's actually gotten worse, okay? When they first opened up, honestly, it wasn't as bad when they first opened up, okay? And it's not because of the people going in there. A lot of it has to do with the larger caliber weapons. And again, if somebody wants to pull out a hand cannon, their .357 or whatever, that's what a gun range is for. I have no issues with that. I work sometimes 12 to 16 hours a day. So on Sundays, I like to sleep. So at nine o'clock in the morning, I'm waking up to bam, 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 and it's non-stop. And it's not because they're taking the hand cannons and putting them all in number one. They're putting them in number 16, which is right on the back end of the building, which is echoes right throughout our subdivision. So I mean, it's bad. And like Dave said, with the wraps, wrapping the insulation didn't take that out. I mean, there's definitely things they can do. They have to put some stuff on the inside to insulate it. I don't think any of us want to see the business go away. Again, it cleaned up the property. It's, it's a decent business, you know, there's no issues there except for the noise. But we really need them to start looking at addressing it because it, it's getting bad. Somebody brought up, you had in one of the meetings, they were comparing it to the noise on 55, okay? There's nothing compared to it. The, when they pull out these large caliber weapons, you can hear it as clear as day, and it's not like one guy shoots off six and that's it. When somebody's doing that, they got a round box of 50, and they're blowing that thing off. And, you know, if it was once in a while, okay, we could, ah, we live with it, okay? That's what it is. It's not. It's constant. So that's why we're really coming here and asking, we need some help.
Would it be possible, would it help if we were to ask the management over there to maybe restrict the heavier caliper weapons to be shot?
After one o'clock?
Ten and two or so, or two and five?
I think that would help. I mean, we're still gonna hear the noise. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. People are working from home. People are still gonna hear it. I mean, there are times I work from home as well.
You know, unfortunately, I, I don't think you're ever gonna come to any solution that you're gonna be 100% happy with.
Well, we just want them to work on the insulation.
But, well, this is a quick, you know, maybe we can ask them to change, to allow heavier caliper weapons to be shot at certain hours. So it's not bothering you guys as much, but.
What about La Quinta? What's gonna happen when La Quinta finally opens up? There's no way that they're gonna put up with this at all.
All right.
You know, I mean, you're staying at a hotel. You got something, you're trying to spend the night, and all you're hearing is bang, bang, bang.
What, how late do they open at night?
Uh, actually, the hours have changed because of the whole COVID, seven-ish, if I remember correctly. I've, I've been there a couple of months, so I, I don't know the new hours at this point.
I mean, Jim, can you reach out to them, ask them to change or restrict the heavier caliper weapons from like noon to three or something?
But if they really want the full understanding, I mean, I'd be happy to meet with Dave. We'll stand there. Have somebody line up and, you know, 16, right there.
Well.
With a caliber weapon. We stand on the other side of the fence and let them hear what we're hearing. Maybe that's how they would understand it.
Well, they, listen, they, they understand it. Kevin Ollie's been out here a couple of times. He said in a meeting, right to my face, we know we got a problem. So to your point, is it damn?
Yeah.
I, I don't accept what you said because that's not what they promised when they were requesting the rezoning. They said, and I can quote you the three things they said. A, the noise wouldn't be a problem, which is a very, very vague statement. I think, Mayor, that involved you, okay?
I asked them twice that night.
Number two, they said that the noise would not be audible over local traffic noise. That's not true. And in the actual rezoning request, in writing, it says that the noise on the exterior of their building would be barely detectable. Of, e, e, either they're crazy optimists, or they really, really overstated their understanding of how much noise comes out of that building.
And honestly, if you're in the front end of the building, you walk in through the main entrance, you're where the, all the guns are, you know, you're getting ready to go into the range, you don't hear it. You know, you hear little muffled shouts. But when you're on the outside of the building, back where we live, it echoes because it's all going through that ventilation system.
You know, my, my, I, I guess underlying some of my frustration personally is this. And I guess it depends, you know, if, if I want to give them the benefit of the doubt, they grossly misstated to you guys the character of the noise coming from that range. Now, again, if I give them the benefit of the doubt, maybe they made a mistake. But they bragged about how good they were at building these facilities. They said they constantly tweaked them. They gave examples of how they're in, they're so close to somebody's neighborhood in Texas.
Yeah.
But if you look at the.
It's true.
But if you look at the facilities here, the one in Naperville is in a highly industrial area, the one in, uh, Mokena, same thing. It's a highly industrial area. So it's not really bothering anybody because it's not near the homes. This is literally a wooden fence between us, and that's what we're hearing.
But, but doesn't that give the, the village some kind of authority if they misstated, again, for whatever reason you want to assign to it, if they misstated on the application for rezoning, the noise nuisance that they are creating, don't you guys have any kind of jurisdiction over that?
We're gonna get one, okay? One way or the other, we're gonna find out. Uh, like I said, this is caught off guard here, and let us, let us work some more on it, would you please?
Absolutely.
Okay?
We're just looking for this thing to get pushed forward. And, and I want to be just clear about something as it, with regards to the limitation of weapons during certain hours, or limitations on weapons while they're looking for a solution. I get it. The world's upside down today. There's COVID. Their business hours are restricted. I'm not asking for something as if it was normal times. But if they don't know how to fix the problem, and all appearances suggest that they don't because they spent considerable amount of money on wrapping the ventilation system to almost no benefit, let them take as much time as they want in fixing it. But in the meantime, don't be upsetting and disturbing our neighborhood. Have them limit the caliber of weapons that they're allowed to fire while they're looking for a fix. That's fair. And that holds them to the standard that they themselves boasted about in the rezoning request, right?
Yeah, that's, that's a possibility, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we've got, we've got your point, okay? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, any other citizens wish to address the village board on hopefully a different issue?
Yeah, I want to say one more thing.
Um, Mayor, can you ask Jim to let me know who's here electronically? Because I don't know who's listening in.
Okay, uh, who's on the phone tonight? I know Mr. Trustee Luciano is. Uh, is there anybody else so we can get a list?
Anne's here.
Anne Burkland.
John's here.
Kelly, is she?
She's in the bathroom.
Kelly's, Kelly's in the back. Noriel in the back.
Yep.
The chief, always.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else speak up?
There's three other people that didn't speak up, so.
Okay, so we got. All right, if there are no other citizens that wish to address the board, either electronically, remotely, or here, I'm gonna move on to tonight's consent agenda, which consists of approval of the regular meeting minutes for July the 14th. Also, approval of the regular meeting minutes for July the 28th. Approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes for July the 28th. Number four, approval of account payable in the amount of $351,721.14. Number five, approval of a payment in the amount of $15,800 to Edward, Batus, and Associates for Consulting and Research Review Appraisals, appraisal services regarding the ComEd project. That's the, for those of you who are listening, that's the right-of-way for our Lake Michigan water pipeline. Finally, approval of a payment in the amount of $65,626.85 to Superior Road Striping for striping completed on River Road and Syle Road. Are there any questions on tonight's consent agenda, or are there any items a trustee would like removed for further review?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Diane Roelkall, please.
Luciano?
Yes.
Brockman?
Yes.
Debold?
Yes.
Kirkland?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, that, that's it, right? Consent agenda stands approved, okay? Wasn't keeping count with you, Diane, so, you know, wasn't quite sure. Okay. Uh, under reports and communications, uh, actually, are there any communications to the board, Diane?
Uh, no, there are not.
Okay. Uh, I do not have any proclamations, but under comments, I'd like to say the governor has stepped up his, at least recommendations. He's, he comes out with directives and then pushes it down to the local authorities to make sure that they enforce the issue or whatever you'd like to say that the local authorities are gonna do. Uh, it, it does, as far as I'm concerned, it, it seems to, and correct me if I'm wrong, our legal department, that it gives us a little more of a push towards people who are refusing now to do what I believe 85% of the people out there believe is the right thing, and that's the wearing of the masks, the social distancing, the, the washing of the hands, okay? There's, there's that group out there that really, you know, it's the conspiracy theories. And there's, there's not really any way to get to them except by enforcement. And it's a shame, but that's what's gonna happen. Now, the biggest problem is, as the chief and I have been discussing, the biggest problem is always the, the bars. And chief's been out talking to them. Uh, they, they know where I stand. And they they've been pretty good, right, chief? Not excellent, but.
The staff's been much better about wearing masks, and they're encouraging their patients to wear masks, but it is that kind of environment with that demographic where it's very tough.
Yeah. So I mean, it, at least it's stepping up because the first time out, when the masks were the only thing that was directed from downstate, it was pretty much not being, uh, done in the bars and things like that. So it, it's stepping up. I think education as, as it's I mean, the situation kind of is telling everybody that something has to slow this up. And if this little cheap piece of cloth can do it, uh, everybody needs to do their part. And, uh, and as leaders in the community, when we're out and about, we ought to show people that we're willing to do it right along with it and hope that they do it too. I actually mentioned it to a guy in Mariano's the other day. Thank God he didn't smack me. But he, uh, he just said, "It's none of your business." And I said, "Well, I'm sorry, but it is." And I let him know who I was, and I said, "And I would appreciate it if you come to Shorewood," you know, because he said, "I don't even live here." And I said, "Well, if you come here to shop, don't bring a bug with you." And spray it all over the food that we're out there buying. And we left. It wasn't a very friendly departure, but I didn't really care. As whatever, okay? Okay? So anybody else have any comments on, uh, the COVID-19 response? I believe, uh, chief, I, I, I did kinda ask on that one message that I went to you, the ZIP code, how are we doing right now within ZIP code?
As far as the ZIP code?
Yeah.
Cases have remained relatively steady as a 60404 ZIP code.
Yeah.
And then I, I gave you the numbers for the county, which are posted on the I N P H website, which they're incrementally going up. Um, we, we see that. And then as a region, we're tied to a K and P. And that positivity rate, as well as, I think it's a hospital rate, those two categories, they're, they're definitively going up. They're not skyrocketing, but, but they're going up. And our region is, you know, from a positivity standpoint, we're at a 6.7 or 6.8. And the, the threshold is eight for some kind of action or consequence. And so, that's only willing K and P counting on. And that's supposedly what will be defined by if there's to be consequences.
Yeah. So if everybody does their part, hopefully that flattens out and starts to reduce. Before we get into that warning mode, signing rate, everybody, please. Follow the herd. Okay? All right, let's move on to tonight's order of business. Business item one, consideration for approval of an ordinance granting a conditional use to operate a fitness and a wellness center at 312 Gregory Court in the Village of Shorewood, Will County, Illinois. This is Rise Above Unconventional Training. This is up for a first read. Trustee Brockman and Kelly Chrissy.
Okay, Mayor, thank you. I'll kick this off. And, uh, Dan Diarko from Rise Above Unconventional Training aired before us virtually, asking for this conditional use. And, uh, we did hold a public hearing. No one appeared for or against the project. And it comes here with a six oh vote. And Kelly, if you'd like to explain what, what this is all about.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Um, so the request is for a conditional use to be able to operate a fitness and wellness center in a B3 zoning district. It is under, fits under the classification of physical culture and health services, gymnasiums, and reducing salons in our code. And so Rise Above is located currently at 314, but is relocating to 312 due to some term in their lease agreement. However, uh, we do need to have a conditional use in order for them to locate in the B3 zoning district. So, um, what you see here is the, uh, they're located at the end of Gregory Court, and they're one of the units on the west side of the building. They're just moving right next door. In terms of their services, they primarily offer one-on-one personal training as well as nutrition and lifestyle coaching. They currently have, um, at most, they've indicated 10 patrons in the space with one employee. But they hope to be able to expand to 20 patrons with three to four employees at some point in the future. They operate their business between 5:30 a.m. and 10 a.m. and then again between 4:30 and 8 p.m. The PZC did recommend approval subject to conditions. One of those is to ensure that the business activities are conducted inside, which is a pretty typical condition. And then also compliance with other, uh, codes and ordinances of the village. And I'm happy to answer any questions. We do have Dan Diarko, who is the business owner, on the call if there are any questions for him.
Okay. Are people on the call, are they able to understand everything that's being said here? Mr. Luciano?
Some, most of it, but sometimes if they don't come up to the mic, it, it's hard to hear.
Okay, I'll just remind everybody, try to speak right into your mics and really, really project if you can, okay? To help the situation out.
Well, if there's no other questions or comments about the project, uh, I will make a motion to approve an ordinance granting a conditional use to operate a fitness and wellness center at 312 Gregory Court, Village of Shorewood, and like to waive the second read.
Second.
Okay. Diane Roelkall, please.
Debold?
Yes.
Brockman?
Yes.
Kirkland?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Luciano?
Yes.
Okay, agenda item number one stands approved. Moving on to business item number two, consideration for approval of an ordinance amending Title I, Chapter Five, Article C, the building inspector, and Title Eight, Chapter Three, Mobile Homes and Mobile Home Parks of the Village of Shorewood Village Code and amending the Shorewood Crossroads Zoning Ordinance, Title Ten of the Shorewood Village Code regarding definitions, mobile home park regulations, and non-conformities and zoning officer duties. This is also a first read. Uh, trustee Brockman and Kelly.
Thank you. Again, Mayor, uh, we also held a public hearing in regards to this agenda item, and, uh, no one spoke for or against the project. It does come here with a six oh vote from commissioners, and I hope everybody had a chance to look through this. There's a lot of work in here. And, uh, Kelly, uh, you could give us a brief synopsis, please.
Absolutely, and I'll try and speak into the mic, uh, a little bit better. So if you'll recall, this matter was before the board at a committee of the whole meeting back in June, and we were directed to prepare some text amendments to essentially move the regulation, the zoning regulations from the building code into the zoning ordinance. And so we've prepared that text amendment. As a result of that text amendment, there were some other amendments that were necessary in order to kind of clean up the language and also update our process and the applicable or responsible, uh, party. So in some cases, it was the building official, and in other cases, the zoning officer. And so we cleaned up that language. The, um, some of those other terms needed, uh, defining within the zoning ordinance. And so we've added terms and we've also revised terms. There's a section in the zoning ordinance for non-conformities. This one probably was the most change that we needed to incorporate. And that is because the code only addressed non-conforming uses. So what we've done is we've incorporated some provisions to allow non-conforming lots as well as non-conforming structures such as setbacks that don't meet the current code, for example. We've allowed some of those circumstances to remain under certain circumstances. Um, and so that's all spelled out in these revisions. And then as part of this, uh, we have updated the building inspector position as well as the duties of the zoning officer to reflect some missing responsibilities and to coordinate, uh, between the two. Originally, the building inspector was responsible for zoning administration, which is no longer the case. So we tried to clean up that language. I will also, uh, mention that there was a question that came up at the public hearing regarding the fire district, uh, whether or not they were on board with the regulations. They had reviewed the current code requirements that are in the building code. Those are not proposed to change, and the fire district did not recommend any modifications to them. I did, however, forward them the revisions as we've presented it. Unfortunately, I haven't heard back as of yet as to whether or not those are adequate or sufficient for their purposes. So as of right now, um, we've presented the information to them, but we haven't gotten any feedback as of yet.
Counsel, would it be okay for us to go ahead with this then?
Well, that's your call. I mean, you could, you could adopt it, waving second read, or you can move it forward to a second read at another meeting.
Well, with that being said, I do have a question regarding the way the fire protection district is listed. It, it, it states in this that it says two ABC dry chem extinguishers are gonna be provided. Doesn't say provided by who, but it says within 200 feet of each individual mobile home lot. Says, you know, it says extinguishers shall be inspected every six months and be kept in conditioned, uh, and ready, ready-conditioned at all times. You're talking about having poles or extinguishers mounted throughout that mobile home park then, which I don't believe exists.
Well, that is why we asked the fire district for them to review and identify if there were any revisions that they needed, and there were no recommendations for revisions. I was told that the wording "as is" and the regulations "as is" are acceptable.
It may be acceptable, then, it's not current. Is that a fair statement, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
You're, you're saying what that...
If you read, uh, section eight, three, eight dash three dash six, under Fire Protection, item number B, it states, "Two ABC dry chem extinguishers of an approved type by the state fire marshal for use at mobile home parks shall be provided," now it doesn't state by who, "which shall be placed at locations within 200 feet of each individual mobile home lot. Each fire extinguisher shall be periodically examined at least six months and kept at all times in a condition of use." So you would have to have...
How long do you think they're gonna stay there?
But, but that's, but that's what I mean. It's, if it's in here, I, I respect the aspect of reaching out to the fire department, but if they're comfortable with this being in here and we adopt this, the mobile home park's gotta be aware that's, that's a significant impact, that they've got a, a maintenance aspect. I don't know how they're gonna mount poles with fire extinguishers every 200 feet. So just something I wanna make sure until, if we heard something back defended from the fire department is, I guess, one key I like to kind of hear on that. That's, uh, it's a lot of fire extinguishers to be sitting outdoors in their facility.
Well, and what I will say is that, um, these are the current regulations. And I think as we discussed back in June, there has been some need to address the issues that are not currently compliant. And so that is something that we'll need to have a discussion with the mobile home park operator on to ensure that...
I'm ecstatic at the amount of, uh, labor that's gone into this. It's been reviewed very thoroughly, um, and just the fact that, you know, if nobody wants to touch that and they're on board with it, I, I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem with it, then it's just gotta be brought up to speed.
Agreed.
That's all, that's all that I guess I wanna make sure that's noted and it's not being oversight.
Understood.
Yeah.
Would you expect that you would hear back from the fire department, though? Be, because you said you reached out to them and you haven't heard back from them yet.
Well, so what I haven't heard back from them on is if they wanted to do a complete review of the existing code with our revisions. In the, in the building code for the mobile home park ordinance, Title Eight, there really isn't any substantive change. We're just relocating some of the zoning regulations from that code into the zoning ordinance. So there's no change there, but we, we had to do some cleanup. And while we were reviewing that code, we wanted to see if the fire district had any recommendations for other modifications besides just their fire protection, excuse me, fire protection section. So we did pass along the entire revised ordinance. And that, they haven't weighed in on whether or not those regulations are adequate from a spacing perspective. But they did review this particular section that we're talking about now.
Well, if they've reviewed it, I mean...
Well, what I'm, what I'm concerned with is, were they grandfathered in even prior to us putting that together? This mobile home park, they...
Well, yeah, I mean, they were, they're grandfathered in on a lot of things, but now you're re-adopting the ordinance. I think trustee Debold's question is whether it's reasonable to have that requirement in the ordinance and what impact that's gonna have and how it would be carried out.
That, that's just a lot of placement of, you know, for lack of a, it, I, one could argue it's fire extinguishers, but one could also argue, uh, the risk involved within proximity of one another, you know, the way that the mobile home park sits. So i-if we're, if this is going to stay in there, and as the mayor's referenced, there may have been some grandfathering along the way. But if we're updating all of this, trying to bring everything up to speed and whatnot, yeah, there's, uh, I guess there's probably a better term, some clarification to be had.
Maybe the question to the fire district is more appropriately, is that necessary or would it be helpful to the public safety?
Yeah. We may, uh, I would appreciate it if we stayed on a first read with this.
Why don't we do that?
Because there are some things, as the trustee just brought up, that's a major issue, actually. Because, uh, a couple hundred feet from each home, you'd probably need four poles in there.
Bet you need more than that.
Yeah. You'd think it's that big.
There's a lot of, there's gonna be a lot of extinguishers throughout that park. And, you know, there's issues about...
Depending on how, and, and again, now you'd have to fall for the, in regards, you'd have to fall for the state fire marshal on that. And the way intersections work, it's no different than fire hydrants, for lack of a better term. So, you know, I...
These are gonna be exposed, and you got kids are gonna be out there, they're gonna be messing with them. They're gonna be vandalized. It's just gonna, it's gonna happen.
Right, so that's, I just, I think it's a, something at both parties, and I, I agree with the mayor. I'd like to leave it potentially at a first read, just to get some clarification on both parties from the fire district, make sure they're aware, you know, the, the park.
Fire district might, might say, you know, "It's not needed." They may not even...
Completely agree.
Um, I do believe that, uh, the mobile home park operator may be on the call if there's questions specific to whether or not they currently have anything out there or if they're, um, able to meet the 200-foot distance. I'm, I'm not exactly sure. We haven't done an inventory of the fire extinguishers, but, um, if there's specific questions, I believe he's available on the call.
Is the mobile home park operator on the line?
Nope. Not talking.
At, at that point, I'd leave it as a first read and move on.
Okay.
He, you know, another issue here is we oughta maybe bring up the reason that we went through this total exercise is we really wanted to give them an opportunity to be able to approach the board for some variances that weren't allowed under any situation under the old, uh, structure that we had set up. True or...
That, that is correct, yes. Provide the same opportunity to this, uh, property owner as is afforded to other property owners.
Right. So I mean, yeah, we, we need to get some of these now, these, these questions answered and, and clarified and make sure they understand what they were asking for, okay? Because you gotta, sometimes you gotta be careful what you ask for. Because you get it.
That's all that I had. Thank you.
Okay. That's... Okay. Moving on to business item number three, consideration for approval of an ordinance directing and authorizing the disposal of surplus property by the Village of Shorewood. This is also up for a first read. Noriel?
Thank you, Mayor.
You would take us through it, please.
Thank you, Mayor. For your consideration, is the, an ordinance declaring three village vehicles for, um, surplus equipment to be sold at auction? The three vehicles are identified as a 2008 Ford F-250 pickup truck, a 2008 Ford Taurus sedan, and a 2009 Chevy Impala sedan. These vehicles have outlived its useful life. They are outdated, non-functioning, and need to be replaced out of our inventory. Upon being declared a surplus, we intend to put it up for auction using the services of Obenhoff Auctions. This, uh, the disposal process is within the guidelines of the, it's set forth within the Illinois state statutes. Many of these vehicles have already been replaced. And new, newer vehicles or transferred from other, the police department to other departments have already been, are already in use. I welcome any questions.
I'll make a motion to dispose of the three vehicles at the Obenhoff auction and waive the second read.
Second.
Diane Roelkall, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Kirkland?
Yes.
Debold?
Yes.
Brockman?
Yes.
And Luciano?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, your request has been granted. Moving on to business item number four, consideration for approval for... Consideration for approval for a contract award to Champion Drywall in the amount of $14,900 for the village hall exterior columns repair and waive the bid process. Mr. Noriega?
Village hall constructed in 2007. It's approximately 13 years old. As you can see, there's, the column, the exterior full-size columns are showing a little bit of wear and are in need of some maintenance. The maintenance will be to remove the damaged areas, replace it with mesh fiber, repaint, and sand it, of course. Due to the specialized construction and the contractor, we did have difficulties trying to find a contractor to do this work. We reached out to three different contractors and only one had submitted their quote. The one is Champion Drywall in the amount of $14,900. I do have to mention a clarification, so in the bid, the quote that you receive, it did mention the six exterior full columns. If you're aware, we do have six, but we also have two half-wall on the north side. So the new quote, just to clarify, includes all columns. Same amount. And I welcome any questions.
Now, I know we talked about getting these things fixed for the last couple of budgets, so it's, glad to see it's getting done, so...
Do they give any type of warranty, you know, against, I know especially they're going to grind down a lot of the different aspects as to warranty for cracking. I know that's a very subjective topic in that regard, but I didn't know if they're trying to give anything. I know it's not in the written quote, but I didn't know if they had expressed anything of that nature. And no, nothing. Okay.
Like concrete.
I know.
It's difficult.
Make a motion to approve the contract with Champion Drywall and the village of Shorewood for an amount of $14,900 for the exterior column.
Second.
This trustee, Luciano, I had a question.
Oops.
Yes, sir.
How long is this project going to take, Noriel? The data estimate?
Approximately two weeks, I believe.
Okay, and they're going to be using just one lift?
Yes, sir.
I was just curious about the pricing in the quote for the lift, the $2,700. Is that within range or does that seem high for two weeks?
I think it's reasonable for an aerial lift. Usually, equipment by the week sometimes can range, depending on the type of equipment, can range from anywhere from $1,000 to $5,000 per week.
Okay. What size of equip, what type, size of aerial equipment is this? Is this a scissor lift or is it one of those newer type ones where it reaches out?
The quote didn't clarify the exact make and model of the lift.
All right, that was my only concern. Thank you.
Dan made a motion. I'm still with the second.
Okay. Diane, roll call, please.
Luciano?
Yes.
Brockman?
Yes.
DeBolt?
Yes.
Kirkland?
Yes.
And Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. General number four stands approved. Moving on to number five. Consideration for approval of a resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement by and between the county of Will and the village of Shorewood for the provision of animal control services. Chief?
So it's a housekeeping item. We've had this contract, I think, since 2014. We're up for renewal. We never had a price increase. This year, there's a slight price increase in there. This is for stray animals. It doesn't include nuisance wildlife unless occasionally we'll get a sick or injured animal that poses a problem to public health and safety and to help us out with that. But it doesn't include, the question always comes up, does it include tracking, trapping of raccoons and skunks? No, it does not. We refer people to a wildlife trapper for those.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the village of Shorewood and Will County Animal Control.
Second.
Diane, roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Kirkland?
Yes.
Brockman?
Yes.
DeBolt?
Yes.
And Luciano?
Yes.
General number five stands approved. Moving on to our final business item. Update regarding utility billing. Billing, I'm sorry. Mr. Colata?
Thank you, mayor. So before you, the memo explains a little bit of the history of the past month of usage. What we saw in the August bill that just recently came out was a significant increase in total usage. So we saw over 10 million more gallons used in the prior month than the month before that, and actually the same month the year before that. So as a result of that substantially higher usage, utility bills were noticeably higher for some residents. So the dollar amounts there show that overall the billed amount increased by about $116,000. So as you know, there's kind of three different components to the bill itself. One is the water fee, the sewer fee, and then we have other fees that are, you know, for the refuse, there's a rehab charge and a couple of things like that. So you may recall that month where we had significantly higher use, that we had very little precipitation, higher temperatures. So it kind of makes sense that we did have a spike in usage, and that's really the reason why we had the increase. So there has been a few comments made about, you know, well, would a deduct meter perhaps be something that is worth considering? And my understanding is this is something the village has talked about in the past, internally and perhaps even in public meetings. So basically, what the deduct meter would do is it would be a meter that would not receive the sewer fee charge because it wouldn't be putting water into the sewage system, okay? So a lot of times, businesses or homes may have irrigation systems, and that's typically how those deduct meters are used. There's a handful of irrigation-only meters in town currently. So the practice has been that when it comes to charging that, the sewer fee, it is applied when someone, when a property has access to a sanitary. And that's, that's kind of the background or the history of that. So when it comes to the sewer fee itself, most of that is really set through our intergovernmental agreement with Joliet. They set the fee, and they have been increasing that fee substantially over the past couple of years. We've seen 7% each of the past three years, I should say. So there is a small amount that we add on to that in order to maintain our sanitary collection system because it's got to get to Joliet somehow. So overall, the sewer fee that's charged is typically, you know, the largest part of the bill because of those factors. So, you know, the primary, I guess, clause or part of that intergovernmental agreement with Joliet stipulates that the village should pay based upon billed water use. And as a result of that, you know, we report monthly how much is we bill to our water customers. And that's really, it is designed that way, my understanding, so that the users are paying for the service and that they are arguably benefiting from. So at this time, you know, staff does not recommend reopening an intergovernmental agreement discussion with the city of Joliet. We think that the way it's currently constructed is financially beneficial for the village. Alternative methods could result in significantly higher charges for village residents and businesses. And it's really for those reasons that we think at this time it would be appropriate to not reopen it and not to consider deduct meters. I'd be happy to take any questions.
I agree with you 100%, Jim. We're sure that the meters are working correctly, right?
Yes. You mean the meters that we have in households?
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, we're in the midst of a replacement program, you know, so the age of the meters may vary depending upon the business or the home, but I think we're about two-thirds of the way through that program. Ann or Noriel could probably correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct.
We're, they've been taking temperatures of the, of our area since 1876. This is the 11th warmest May, June, and July. Did these people also call COMEd, see why their COMEd bill was higher?
Have they? I couldn't answer that.
Because I'm sure that since it was a lot warmer, their air conditioner ran quite a bit more, so they used more water. I mean, that's...
I know my electric bill was more.
This is trustee Luciano. I just want to add to Jim's comment because this was a discussion we had at the Citizens Advisory Committee about a year ago when someone brought up the same subject. And when investigating it, I think Ann had mentioned to me that we were allowing people to fill up their pools and not charging them for one time. And consequently, I guess that program was ended simply because we found out because of the sewage situation or the agreement we have with Joliet, that the village would be in charge for that, the sewage part, anyway. So I believe in, correct me if I'm wrong, Ann, I believe that at that point, we stopped allowing them to continue freely, to fill their pools freely.
Yeah, trustee Luciano, that is correct. The village's sewer rate used to be that after 25,000 gallons of water consumption, the sewer charge was no longer applied. The theory behind that being that if you're using that much water, it's probably not going through the sewer. It could be to fill a swimming pool or for irrigation purposes or some other manner such as that. Back in 2014, when we amended water and sewer rates, we did some calculations and figured out how much money we were losing because we still had to pay Joliet for the sewer treatment on all of that water, regardless of its purpose. So that section of the code was removed where it gave that credit after 25,000 gallons of use.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ann, thanks for the work on this. And Jim, thank you for putting this together. I know there's got to be somebody listening out there who's on that, in that situation because I get enough emails and enough text, actually, understanding that the amount. But when you look at last, the 2019 August usage, now the administrator mentioned this, but he gave a number, okay? But you need to realize that, that August 2019 at 40 million total water, that's metered out of the towers and to the towers. So that's a, that's a different consumption rate than what you're going to see when we add up your water use at the house. But what I'm really wanting to get at is that 40 million, this August 20 was 50 million, okay? You're looking at, it's 20% more water being used during this year period. That's a huge amount. That's a huge amount of water. Talking to the water department people, there were some days where we couldn't pump hard enough out of our wells, out of our supply wells, to keep the levels up in the towers. They were actually starting to lose levels. And that went up to like 1.8 million gallons a day when the average is 1.1. So we are definitely consuming the water and using them because the meters are verifying it. Not your home meter, but the meters for the total usage are saying that we are using them. I know I had a repair to do on my pool, and my bill went all the way up to about 210 for the month, just the wife and I. And we don't water the lawn. We got two rain barrels that we use. And, and a normal bill for us would be $85 or $90 for the total bill. And what you're looking at is 210 because I had to put a vast amount of water in my pool. So if you're turning on your irrigation system to try to keep that grass nice and green, plush and alive, you're probably using a lot more water than you think.
Do you know what we're selling bulk water for, Jim? To these guys that come in with semis and pull water?
Ann, do you recall that, or Noriel?
It's five, five and a half per 1,000 gallons, 550 or 565, right in that neighborhood.
Per thousand?
$5.50?
Yeah.
Yeah, thereabouts per 1,000.
And how much does a resident pay for 1,000 gallons?
$4.48 per 1,000.
So, is everybody okay with that, that bulk water? Or do we need to raise that up?
I think everything's fine.
Yeah. I don't know how much we're selling when it comes to that.
Yeah, that's my question. It can't be that much, I wouldn't think.
Yeah. We used to do it a lot, but...
Does Joliet feed the concrete company, or do we... Does Joliet feed the concrete company, or do we...
Well, I think that's probably all Joliet. All that size over there is Joliet, I think.
Okay, that's right.
Yeah, Bailey Concrete is on Joliet's system.
There's actually two other things I wanted to mention real quickly. First of all, the village has not increased the water rate since February of 2018. And the village has also not increased our portion of the sanitary rate since that same time period. And lastly, we have recently put out some new information to, regarding water conservation, and we also created a new how-to-read-your-utility bill. So those, I think, are posted on our website and also on our social media. Hopefully, it answers questions that people may have in terms of their bill.
Because when that, when you said that they couldn't keep up with the level, I mean, isn't that scary to me?
Yeah, it might have got to the point where we were going to act to actually have a moratorium on water usage, okay, at that time. But that petered out, things start coming down, so... Okay, there are no questions. We're done with business item number six. Moving on to reports. Trustee Anderson, Public Works.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, everybody knows about the storm that rolled through here yesterday. We had a lot of storm damage down trees, limbs. We're going to ask you to bring the trees, tree limbs out to the front of your house in the parkway, keep them behind the curb, and bring them out if you can as, in as large as possible branches that you can manage because we're going to come around with chippers and pick them up. And it's just to save time to get these bigger branches picked up and ground up into the chippers so we don't have to have little bundles, just manageable-sized branches. And we'll be going through the town multiple times a week for the next seven to 10 days. So we expect a lot in the next couple of days, and then after the weekend, we'll be expecting a lot more again. So we'll be doing that. We've also been doing some, we've got six crews out doing storm damage cleanup, street sweepers out. We've had four large trees go down yesterday. There's possibility of about 20 more trees in the parkways are going to have to be removed. Those will be evaluated over the next few weeks. Moving on to the road striping, that's, most of that's been done. There's a little bit left over. You've probably noticed some of that on river and sile. Most of the MFT is finished up for the year, except for some restoration work. We're still waiting on some ADA, the plates, the little bump plates for the sidewalks. We're waiting on those to come in. But we're waiting on those to come in. Sidewalk repairs, the mudjacking has been done. That's completed for the season. And there's also been a 75-foot, 12-inch storm drain that has been replaced out in Kipling Estates. And the bridge, bike trail bridge going over I-55 in the DuPage River. This isn't our project, it's the Will County Forest Reserve, but they were supposed to bring in the three steel spans, and I guess one made it here, and the rest are still being delayed as of the other day. Anyway, Noriel, do they come in, the other two, or?
Yes, they actually came in yesterday.
Yesterday, okay.
For the storm, and they were installed today.
Okay, good, so they're, that's back on schedule. They were held up because of IDOT permitting. And then, last but not least, we had some well aid issues with some, with the chloride injector pump that had to be repaired. Those are the highlights of what's going on. There's a lot more. I'm sure mostly you've seen some of the memos and, but that's the highlights of what's happened around here in the last few weeks. That's all I have.
Lot going on.
Yeah, a lot going on. The storms keeping, keeping Public Works and the PD kind of busy.
Okay, trustee Brockman, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next meeting will be September 2nd here at the village hall, 7 o'clock. Too early for an agenda right now, so I'll have that the next meeting. And speaking of parkway trees, I called at 7 o'clock this morning to, for myself and my neighbors because we had quite a bit around my house there, and by 9 o'clock, everything was gone. So, talk about service, unbelievable.
I mean, what I've seen, and I mean, this is just in a personal opinion, I've seen, you know, everywhere, I mean, there's places that's got trees down, other places, nothing, and then you go another two miles away and there's more trees down. I mean, it's everywhere.
Crazy.
Not just like a big, like a typical storm where I'll just, like, concentrate to one area.
And I also want to comment on the road striping. Boy, that was money well spent. That really looks, that is a great job. They did a good job from one end to the other.
We'll see how that holds up after a couple of winters.
Yeah, right. But it looks good now.
Yeah.
That's it, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Kirkland, Parks and Recreation.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, we got a couple of things coming up, yay. We're gonna have the end of the month on August 28th to the 29th at Shorewood Park. We're gonna have our 2020 socially-distanced family campout. So, registration for that is, you need to register by August 24th. We can only allow 50 people maximum. The camp sites are gonna be spaced appropriately so they'll be far enough apart so each family will have their own space. Breakfast and crafts will be brought to each tent, so there won't be, you know, any intermingling really with the other campers. And each family will have an assigned time to come and make their smores around the campfire. So, this will hopefully keep everybody safe and still be able to have a good time. If you need more information or to register, go to our village website, and under upcoming events, you'll see it there. And then, our community-wide garage sale has been rescheduled now, so it's gonna be September 18th and 19th. And I know that's a little ways off, but I wanted to let people know in case they didn't know so they can start getting their junk together. There's also, due to COVID-19, there's some specific safety guidelines for our garage sales this year, and those details are also on the website under upcoming events. So, those are a couple of things that at least we've got going on. Our splash pads are open as well. And I just had one other thing I wanted to just mention again. Public Works and our police department, an amazing job on our storm cleanup, and the storms just keep coming, and you guys just keep stepping up to the plate, so awesome work. That's all I have.
Okay. Trustee Luciano, Citizens Advisory.
The Citizens Advisory Committee next meeting will be September 24th, 2020, at the village hall. Hopefully, we'll be able to have that meeting. And also, if anyone's interested in getting involved, they can reach either myself or any of the members on the village website, our emails are there. And I would just like to echo what everyone said about Public Works and the police department with the great job they're doing with the work they do to help keep the town cleaned up. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay. Diane, roll call.
Debold.
Yes.
Brockman.
Yes.
Kirkland.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
And Luciano.
Yep.
Okay, we stand adjourned.